All to order the special council meeting here in the city of Marshfield at 207 West Sixth Street, Tuesday, September 20th. Call to order, roll call. All present, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll open up to the public comment period, correspondence. At this time, I will recognize those members of the public who have indicated a desire to address the council. Upon recognition by me, persons may address the council first stating their name and address. The council may act on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to item D. The purpose of this meeting is to gather data to understand the cause and effect of a deficit of approximately $600,000 in the EMS enterprise fund. D, review slash discuss shortfall in the EMS fund presented by Ed Wagner, council president, who will be heading the rest of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor. As you know, we had a meeting of, oh, it's been about, what, six or seven weeks ago now, that where we were informed that there was a deficit in the EMS fund or the, what they call the enterprise fund. Basically, the city council needs to get its arms around this thing and find out how to deal with it. When I was trying, and in my capacity as council president, I was trying to find out what individually the, the council was looking for and what, what questions they had. And I figured the way to do it was in an open session so that everybody could hear what we heard and that basically we could deal with the facts and we could then maybe come up with a direction to help the staff figure out where we need to go. When I went through it, basically, there were three complaints from the council. One was that, or the, well, I shouldn't say complaints or issues. And the issue, the first one was, how do we plug a $600,000 gap in the EMS fund? How do we do that? And what, what are the ramifications of the alternatives? And we don't know all the alternatives yet, and hopefully through an open dialogue here, we can find out what the best alternative is and what's in the best interest of the citizens of Marshfield. The second thing was dealt about the, the EMS service itself. And basically, are we do, what are we doing and how do we make it profitable? We, we also want to talk about some of the alternatives such as, you know, subscriptions, such as regional type of arrangements. There are a lot of things that we can talk about. And the third thing was, how do we, how does the council communicate better with the staff and the staff better with the council? Okay, so those are three different meetings or three different topics that we're going to bring up. Tonight, we're only talking about the most boring part of it, but the most important part, and that is the, how do we deal with, what is, what is the effect of that deficit? What should we be doing with it? How can we deal with it? And what has the least impact on the city budget? And then that's, say, we've got members of the finance department here, and Steve is here, and we hope to carry on a dialogue and get along with, get some idea of how to deal with this thing. Let me, let me tell you what, what's guiding me in this right now. And that is that I know a little bit about accounting because I've had to work in government for over 40 years. I say I had to, it was my choice, and I, which I, I probably should have my head examined for, but nevertheless, I've done that. And I've been through a lot of these accounting situations with different, different communities. At one, at one community that I was a city administrator in, I had to computerize the entire city's accounting system by myself. And to tell you something, if you, if you want to get down to the nitty gritty of accounting, that's, that's the way to do it. Nevertheless, I am not a professional accountant, and I have to rely on the people who are. And we need to, and we need to understand what the nature of this deficit is. And I think that the, what was told to us was that at one, some point in time, they, they wanted to buy or purchase something from the EMS fund, they, that they, and then Finance Director Stolinski basically told them, how can you do that? You've got a deficit. And they, and the, the department, as well as the Fire and Police Commission itself, was totally shocked. They didn't expect anything like that. Nobody apparently knew that there was something like that going on. When I asked questions about it, I found out that there were several causes for this that I think, I'm going to ask Jennifer to go into a little more in detail. But part, number one is our reimbursement rate for our services, because 70% of our calls, as Chief Waddy has told me, 70% of our calls are either Medicare or Medicaid, and that is a fixed price, a fixed price for it. Secondly, we don't, we don't collect everything that we said, that we bill. And that reason is, there are reasons because like, the, some of it could be that the person who had the ambulance service is deceased, and the estate doesn't have, and there's no estate to take, take the money out of. There's other, there's another problem that Medicare or Medicaid paid their fixed rate, and the bill came in quite a bit over that, but Medicare and Medicaid is not obligated to pay one dime after they've paid their, their set fee. Then the other problem is, and the last of the problem is that the city actually takes money out of that EMS fund, out of that enterprise fund. They take a portion of the debt service on the fire station itself out of there, and they take also an administer, a professional services fee. But the professional services fee, I think, only started, I think, as, and what Steve said was 1918, or 2018, not 1918, 2018. So, so that, that, and that was actually cash going out of the system too. So essentially, there was been a drawdown on the system, and there's apparently no good way of accounting for, knowing in advance who's going to, who's going to be able to, eligible for what charges. But each one of those elements has a, has a lasting effect on the city's, well, on the city's debt service first because of the, the payment for the portion of the building used by EMS that's being billed for the, the debt service, for the, that account. And then the second one is that the, the administrative, the professional services fee goes basically to fund the participation of other departments, HR, finance, administration, I'm trying to remember what the other one is. But the, the point is that there's been a drain on the system. What I want to do, I want to ask Jennifer to lead off and to basically amplify or, or go into enough detail where we can, where people can understand why those make a difference in, in our bookkeeping and what the absence of those funds, where the absence of those funds would cause difficulty for the city in its budgeting. Can you do that? Okay.
All right. Could you go back to what you want me to talk about first? Give you, give you a recap of, you know, you've summarized it quite nicely based on what we presented, you know, six weeks ago in our August meeting.
Okay, I'll.
So maybe ask a, a specific question. I'll, I'll start.
Okay. I, I know that the council's probably going to want to ask you a few questions too, so it doesn't have to be real in-depth, but what I had in the outline was this, this is an enterprise fund which is different than other funds.
Correct.
That the council sees, or doesn't see in some cases. I'll give you an example, there's, I think, in the financial reports that came out, that were sent out today, there's, on page one of 10, on the balance sheet report, right at the very bottom of the page, there's an account number, and it says ambulance accounts receivable, and it shows that during the current period, which was August, there was 19, 19,666, 1.86, billed, and then there's, and then the account balance is $1,435,388. Now, a councilman looking at that like that will say, boy, they got a lot of money. Why, where's the deficit? Why, why is that, why is that number deceptive? Can you start there?
Sure. That, that number is deceptive because that is the outstanding balance today, but ultimately, that $1.4 million will not be collected. Every month, we have about 200,000 that shift, every year, we have about 200,000 that shifts into this uncollectible bucket from the past. And what we have not done thus far is to account for that amount that will ultimately not be collectable, that, what is known as an allowance for uncollectible accounts. So if we were, we've done some brief analysis and looking at that, 800 to 900,000 of that, if we continue on our current trend, is ultimately never going to be collected by the time that age is out. And a claim ages out, I think it's six or seven years, is when LifeQuest, who is our provider, will no longer attempt to collect. So, LifeQuest took over in 2017. Fast forward six years, we're going to start to see everything that was billed in 2017 that's not collectible, they're going to write off, and we'll, we'll see a big hit. Now, if we had been sort of adjusting our revenue to account for that, it wouldn't be a tremendous hit because we would have been accounting for it all along. So, you know, that's why that number is significant. The second reason that number is significant is because the way the EMS fund is budgeted is based on that revenue number. And they, in the budget, it assumes that because I've billed it, I'll collect it, and then it's eligible for spending, which, if we go back, and 600, 700, 800,000 of that is never going to be collected, but we've already sort of planned to spend it and have been spending that. We have started out, the EMS fund did, has a positive unrestricted net position of 270,000 right now. So, but that has decreased over the past three years from, you know, a million to 600, to 400, to now 279. So, at the current trend, they're going to consume all of that, and the fund itself will become deficit, not just cash. So that's, you know, just the way they, the fund has thought about budgeting is they've assumed that because I've billed it, I can then spend it, and we're finding that that's going to.
So is, is the current amount still in the 600,000 range?
Roughly. I think it's been a couple of months since we've brought in new data, but I don't think we're seeing a big collection rate in that. They divide it into phases, so we have phase one, where people are paying, and it's current, and we have phase two, where there's, they're still communicating, and phase three, we're not getting anything. So as money shifts over, I haven't looked at it in the last couple of months, but I wouldn't suspect that we've, we traditionally don't get a lot once it gets into that phase three. They're pretty much.
Phase three is what again?
That's, long-term collection, essentially, there, there is, you know, those claims are the ones from 2017, the ones from 2018, where they're not getting any response from the debtor.
Okay. The, okay, the, the thing is, the, the fund, tell the council a little bit about, what is the difference between an enterprise fund and our normal city general fund?
So a general fund is primarily, it's used to account for, for everything that doesn't lawfully or by decision of, of council belong in another fund. So it's the default. It's the fund that's, the revenue comes from property taxes, your state aids are the primary sources. So we have some special revenue funds that are also governmental funds, but they have a dedicated revenue stream. Take, for instance, communication, has a dedicated revenue stream, pays for its expenditures, still a governmental fund. We have another class of funds called the enterprise funds, and those will operate more typically like you would think of a business. Their revenue stream should support their operating expenses, their debt payments, everything that they have to pay, their fees should support. Most typically, we will see enterprise funds listed as utilities because they've got a dedicated revenue stream, they have recourse if you don't pay. You know, if they issue debt, they have the ability to increase their rates to be able to pay it. So we have, you know, more of a guaranteed revenue stream. I think it's unusual to put an EMS fund in an enterprise-type fund because while we might have consistent revenue, there's no guarantee, we have no recourse, you know, as far as shutting off a service or putting it on the tax roll if, if the customer doesn't pay. So, you know, that, that would be the primary difference. And when we set up the EMS fund in, in 2001, or 2002, excuse me, was the first year that it was reported separately, you know, they were, they were barely breaking even. So a lot's changed since 2002 in terms of, you know, certain accounting standards such as retirement has to be booked, so that creates an expense that, you know, that came into effect 2016, 2017, so that would be an unforeseen disadvantage of, of having your EMS in a enterprise-type fund versus a governmental fund. Also, they will, an enterprise fund will pay depreciation or take depreciation as an expense, just like a business might, whereas in a governmental fund, that happen, doesn't happen in our regular statements because we focus on the near term. So depreciation is a long-term thing. So that's kind of another disadvantage of having that EMS in an enterprise fund because they have to cover the cost of their depreciation as well.
So, okay, I, I get that, but there's, okay, there's the debt service that we pay for the part of the, the building of the, the fire station, and then there's that professional services fee. Are there any other fees besides those two that are being taken out of that fund now that go back to the city? Oh, and the, and the end of that question, the punchline is, if there's no money, what are they paying us with and where does it come from?
Okay, so I believe those are, you know, the debt service, an enterprise fund is, is supposed to be able to recover or, you know, produce revenue to pay for that. I, I will say, it's, the debt service that was allocated to the EMS fund is general obligation debt, means it's backed by the full faith of the government, where we have the obligation to levy taxes to pay that. And we have, we have missed that opportunity to levy taxes because we put it in the EMS fund and expected their, their charges for services to cover that. So that.
So we're going to have to levy that if, eventually, we're going to have to levy that, that, that mortgage payment, right?
That is a possible alternative that would provide some relief, especially in terms of shrinking that cash deficit that the enterprise fund is currently seeking, experiencing. That cash would be coming in in the term, in terms of property tax revenue instead of, essentially now, what happens with that negative cash deficit is, in our financials, we show it as an IOU to the general fund. So now, the general fund has that accounts receivable from the EMS fund.
Which we, which we create like cash then, right?
For 615,000, but if we suddenly close up the EMS fund and that cash balance is still there, that's a direct reduction of the general fund balance. So the general fund, you know, if we're talking about the EMS fund over here not recording their receivables at their true collectibility, we sort of have that same, we've kind of shifted that now to the general fund.
Okay. Thank you. What, in, in your analysis of this, and you and Jordan, the, okay, let's get with the professional services fund or charge against it. How, is that a lump sum into the general fund that, in other words, here, here are three or four departments here. Here's HR, finance.
IT.
IT and administration. And each one of them are, are shown to have, each one of those accounts are credited with having that revenue towards it, aren't they? Or, or do you, or do you do it as a lump sum and just, just write a budget for, blank check for whatever they're asking for?
Right. So mainly those cover salaries and wages and a portion of operating supplies in that fund. The allocation is based on, in certain cases, headcount. So Fire has 11 and 2/3, so of the total city headcount, you know, 5%, they're going to get 5% of those charges. We book all of the budget for the admin, IT, finance, HR, in its entirety in the general fund, and then that's shown as a reduction, as an expense recovery.
Due from, due from EMS, right?
Right.
Okay. So and if, and of course, if that goes away, that's something now that would add to the city's, but with the city would have to add to its budget.
Right, it would reduce.
And it's about, if I understand, it's about 200, somewhere in the 200,000 range for next year?
Uh, I'm not.
Yeah, Chief, you.
Want to come up?
I mean, when you're talking about that professional services line, there's more than just that admin allocation in that.
Right.
I mean, that's the payment for LifeQuest services to do the billing, so you really have to break out those components. You can't look at that and just say, oh, it's all just admins or admin, it's all just IT, it's all just finance. It's not. So we pay a considerable amount each month, but that's, it represents at least a FT and a half, software services that LifeQuest is doing the billing on behalf of us and reporting systems that we just don't have. So we contract that out, and that's, I'd say, at least close to half.
Well, thank you. I was not aware that, that, that LifeQuest was a part of that also. So, and that's something that's going to have to continue no matter what app, what, what we decide, we're, we're going to be paying for that service one way or the other.
Right.
Whether we would do away with the enterprise account or whatever.
Right. In some way, shape or form, somewhat, we have to pay for the, the billing and collection of our charges in the EMS fund. So today, we choose to do that as an, as an outside service through LifeQuest. You know, if we were to, if we chose to bill that in-house, it would still be an expense.
Jordan and Jennifer, if, before I ask the council to come forward with any questions they might have, what would you consider to be the most important takeaway that the council should, could have from this, this exercise? Is it, or I know that's sort of.
That's a pretty, pretty open-ended and loaded question.
Well, yeah, and I, I want to, I want to hear your professional opinion too, both of you.
I, I think, from my perspective, the EMS fund is not a self-sustaining fund as an enterprise fund should be. And, you know, as a council, we have to determine, you know, the level of service and the level of commitment in terms of taxpayer dollars that we are willing to commit to make that fund continue to, to have the EMS service we have to do. So evaluating service levels and figuring out.
You're, are you, are you saying we can do it by still, even, even if there is a city commitment to do something from the general fund to keep the level of service we're at now, that, even if there is that, should we still keep the EMS, the enterprise fund, should we keep it that way? Or should we go to just the full general fund?
I think that would be ill-advised. The general fund, while it would receive the revenue and the expenditures that are currently happening in the EMS fund, that increase in the general fund's budget would disqualify the city from expenditure restraint for at least one year. And our expenditure restraint money estimate for 2023 is $488,000, so we would be disqualified for that unless significant budget cuts were made in other general fund departments to keep us under the allowable increase in our budget. In doing so, at this time, I don't believe that we would get an adjustment in our levy limit for doing, closing an enterprise fund and bringing it into the general fund. I have requested a response from the DOR on that note to see if there, you know, would be an opportunity to increase the levy for that, but at this time, I don't think that would be a possibility. Again, if we close the enterprise fund and bring it into the general fund, that $600,000 cash deficit now becomes the general fund's cash deficit, which is an immediate reduction to the fund balance.
And that would also affect our bond rating, correct?
Absolutely, it would. We just have the negative outlook released from our bond rating, something like this would.
Bring it back.
Be detrimental to our rating. Yes. Additionally, you know, maybe a positive, maybe, maybe not, we would be allowed to levy for the debt. The outstanding principal and interest payments remaining are $1.14 million.
$1.14?
Right.
Okay.
The last payment is due in 2029, so not levying that ultimately hurt the city's cash flow as a, as a total unit because we, we missed the opportunity to actually get cash from taxpayers. Another slight positive would be the long-term impact of the capital assets compensated absences, and the retirement wouldn't be a direct hit to the general fund as they are to the enterprise fund because of the way the reporting requirements differ. And then, of course, the admin allocation would be eliminated.
Right.
So I'm not seeing a whole lot of positive reasons to close the enterprise fund and bring that under the general fund's umbrella.
Jordan, did you want to add anything to that?
I guess I'd just like to say, it's, it's probably just really unfortunate that it's, it's, it's a little bit harder to look at a balance sheet item and know that an allowance should have been on it, and just trying to state that that, I mean, technically probably should have been something that the finances area in previous past probably should have brought up. I, I don't want this to disparage the EMS teams from their work and the wonderful things that they do for our community from that standpoint because an estimate wasn't put into the books when it should have been, and they don't see it until six years down the road. So, and that six years really relates to statute of limitations when write-offs are supposed to be done by that timeframe essentially. So can't collect beyond a certain point, and then it becomes a write-off.
Thank you. At this point, are there any, all of them that have any questions? Okay, we'll, I'll start down here on the far left.
Thank you. Jennifer, have you looked back? And was there, I know you said in 2002, it was barely breaking even. Did you look at the other years, the intervening years there? Was there a time when this fund was doing well? Or has it always been a losing proposition?
No, I think the message to the EMS group was that it was doing well, especially in 2018, when, in 2019, when we were looking at, you know, allocating a larger share of the debt to the EMS Fund and implementing that admin service allocation. But what maybe wasn't considered is that just because you have a high fund balance doesn't mean it's all spendable. And some of that fund balance was restricted in assets that had already been purchased, and some of that would have been allocated to the retirement plan, which the state has overfunded for the last couple of years. And so that, it creates sort of a false sense of security that you might have money to spend, but you really don't. So that spendable amount, like I said before, it was, you know, roughly 400 and some thousand at the end of 2020. At the end of 2021, we're at 279, and I think maybe it was 600,000 at the end of 2019. But that's the amount that's unrestricted, amount that you could apply to future spending. So that's, that's going down significantly every year. And it wouldn't be enough to cover the proposed gap in the 2023 budget, especially since we're going to have to record that allowance.
Follow-up, Ms. Passion?
Yes, I was, because I was remembering that from when we first discussed that in 2018 of adding the Professional Services and things like that to it, that the report we had from Finance was that we, the fund is doing well, and we can afford to do these things. And I was just curious as to where things switched around.
It really was because we're not recording that allowance. We're not giving a true picture of what's going to be available for spending.
Okay, that's all I had.
Yeah. Natasha?
Hi, thanks. Okay, so I'm hearing that the cons of us putting this into, getting rid of the EMS Enterprise Fund and putting it in, I hear the cons. We've got the expenditure restraint, we've got, it'll affect our bond rating. The pros are, we don't, we could levy debt for, levy taxes for the debt for the FIRE station. We don't have to worry about that long-term depreciation and retirement. In, so we, this sounds like it would be a terrible idea to do this year, but in the future, would it be?
We would still have those same issues in the future. We, just to make sure we're clear, we can levy for that piece of the debt regardless of whether this is in an Enterprise Fund or the General Fund, as its general obligation debt. We can levy that regardless. Going forward, we would always have the expenditure restraint exit for a year. We would always have the bond rating unless, you know, we came upon a windfall of money. The cash balance is probably going to remain negative for a time period. I don't see a one-time course correction at this time to correct for that. I think it takes time to build that in.
Still have a floor, Natasha?
I am good, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so the professional fee. If you take out the LifeQuest billing portion of it, do we charge wastewater, police, utilities, library, the same fee for use of those admin?
We do charge, we charge wastewater. We only charge the Enterprise Funds of wastewater and EMS for that admin fee. The rest of Police, FIRE are serviced by the General Fund, and they're in the General Fund.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure.
Over here, anybody? Or Wetzel?
Thank you. All right, I'm wondering how much, okay, so we have a 600-plus thousand-dollar deficit. How much of that, or maybe I should rephrase that, since we began charging debt service and Professional Services outside of LifeQuest to the EMS Fund, how much have we in total charged that fund for those services?
It's probably very close to that amount. The debt service payments are about 170,000 a year, so for 2021, 2020, 2019, you know, that makes up a big chunk of it. Professional Services was about 100 in 2021, probably 80 something in 2020. Maybe 2019 was closer to 50 or 60. So those two events alone probably contribute significantly to the, to the negative cash balance. But also, we're just spending more even outside of those items than we collect.
Okay. I heard, I think it was the previous meeting that we had when we were all sitting around the middle, reference to the fact that these Professional Services were going to be drastically increasing or had been drastically increasing. Is that correct? Or was it the debt services? It was something that was increasing at a fairly rapid rate?
I think probably the Professional Services, like I said, I think they were about 60,000 in 2019. And then, I think part of that is the increase in headcount. At the time, headcount may have been 11 and two-thirds, and we added those firefighters, which would have increased that service allocation because it's based on headcount.
Okay.
Eight and two-thirds headcount to 11 and two-thirds. And I think that happened in 2019 or 2020 when we started to see that. So that would account for that increase. And then, you know, whatever increased operational expenses in the Admin, IT, and whatever, would, as those went up, so did the allocation.
Okay. It seemed like the percentage or the dollar amount that we were being told was increasing seemed like it was more than that. But, okay, LifeQuest took over in 2017. Do we have a problem like this before LifeQuest took over?
I have tried to find out. Obviously, our call volume was much less prior. I think, you know, when we started, I don't know exactly the call volume, so I'm sorry, I won't go there. But, and now I've lost my train of thought completely. Could you repeat that?
Sure. In 2017, when LifeQuest took over, we began to develop this deficit. And as we get to the six, seven-year mark, we're going to start writing off things that are uncollectible.
Right.
Did we have this kind of an issue prior to LifeQuest taking over when this was announced?
Not that I can find. I think, I don't know if there's anybody on the EMS side that could attest to billings and collections at that time. I couldn't find if we were recording an allowance specifically in the, in our ledger prior to. So I don't know if they were sort of netting that before they put the numbers in the books. I couldn't really tell, you know, if we had that. But we've also been increasing our ambulance rates, which just exasperates the problem, right, significantly.
So if anything, maybe it's given us the false sense because we have an organization that's doing full billing, that's doing full collections. It was a false sense that we're going to collect it all when in fact, that's not the case. I want to go back to a comment that Jordan made, commenting about how the Professional Services for LifeQuest, and that's equivalent to 1.5 FTE. Is that what you said?
Well, that's previously what we had.
No, it's not what we had.
Was it, is it not?
No. I agreed with the two Finance Directors ago. He came forth with it, it was 1.5 FTE, but in reality, it was two people doing part-time work, half-days each. So it was a 1 FTE. So...
Okay. Thanks, thanks for clarifying.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that that was, I wanted to get clarification on where you came up with that. I didn't know if it was the volume of calls, the volume of billing, what it was.
Anecdotally, through the meetings that we've been having.
Yeah. Back, it was when I was first on the council, when we were debating about this, that came forth. All right, the last question I have, how quickly do we need to fill this gap? Is this, we need the money right now? Is this tapered in because, you know, we're seeing uncollectibles hitting six, seven? Do we have to fill that gap of that, and maybe a little bit more, each of those timeframes when we hit that six, seven-year mark? What are we looking at for timing for this?
Oh, that's hard to say. I think we need to take incremental steps in the next budget cycle for certain, as we're facing a large write-off. That is something we're working with our financial advisor on. They've done a really good job on the capital expenditure and debt planning side. So we've started working with him on the operational side, and this would be a scenario that I would want. He's working on a model. So that this would be a scenario that I'd want to have him plug into the model and see where, you know, just how urgent the funding needs might be.
Excuse me, can you, when you say looking at a model, what, a model of what? Of the financing plan or?
Not the financing plan, but operationally, how do we maintain, you know, keep our, our spending intact with, you know, what we anticipate collecting from revenues? So essentially, a longer-term budget, we look...
You're not talking about an operated plan for the EMS itself, it's just...
No, this would be for, right, this would be for the city as a whole. We've done a good job planning long-term for big spending items, but when it comes to the budget, we look at it kind of in a vacuum on an annual basis. So we're working with him to kind of project that out and see where, where there would be room to supplement the EMS Fund, should we choose to do that from General Fund.
I do have a little bit more, but I'm going to let others talk. And I'll maybe wrap back to it. Thanks.
Sure.
Ms. Urles?
Good evening, y'all. So I just have a couple, I'm trying to clarify everything in my head. Moving forward, okay, so we've anticipated that there's more money there than there is because we were calculating what we were actually billing for. And everybody knows that Medicare doesn't reimburse what you bill. I mean, everybody knows that. Every single buddy who, everybody who administers healthcare knows that. So I have a couple of, my question is twofold. How do other, how do other organizations do their budget? Because they are dealing with the same thing. So if you have a single physician's office who primarily treats geriatrics, okay, they have a budget also, but they primarily treat geriatrics, probably somewhere in the nature of 90% of their patients would be on Medicare or Medicaid. So how do they do their budget? They've always, they can't be spending more than what they're bringing in. So they've obviously understood that you should have an uncollectible. So we need that.
Right.
So how are we determining going forward what we should be considering as our uncollectible amount, or what our revenue amount really in that account should be?
So we, we do take our gross billings, and I think from past, it's just sort of been a swag where we reduce it at the billing level by roughly half in 2022, that we know or suspect of all of our billings, roughly half of that will be Medicare/Medicaid adjustments off the top. So we kind of start with a baseline that's less than what we bill gross. And then from there, this is where Jordan and a little bit of me have been trying to work with LifeQuest to develop reports that we can look at to determine what that rate really is. Just because 70% of our customers are Medicare or Medicaid, it doesn't, you know, their billing, their gross billing may be different depending on what service they received from us. So trying to work with them to develop some reports and figure out, okay, what should that initial write-off be? And then, you know, trying to work with them and figure out, when do they actually take the, when they get paid for Medicaid? Do they then just give us a number that's a, okay, write this much more off, or how that works? There hasn't been any documentation of how that works prior to Jordan and I, you know, starting to take a look at that. So we're working with the provider to give us some reports so that we can start to analyze that piece of it. As far as your question of how other governments might be dealing with that, I think... Most municipalities will have their ambulance service in their General Fund. So it's part of their tax levy. And so they are, you know, based on their community, communities' priorities, allocating money to different functions. Some communities have this as a special revenue fund, where they can kind of keep it separately. Then we have, I think we heard, Toma is looking at a per capita charge to its city, just like they do to their neighboring communities. So those are ways that other, that we've learned so far, that other communities are handling, you know, the fact that they don't collect as much revenue as they pay out. So it's, it's a supplement, like we supplement parks and rec. They don't collect as much money as it costs for us to run that program, and neither does Public Works or Police or Fire.
Okay. So I'm having a hard time getting through this process without being able to determine how we're going to decide what their budget will be, what their revenue part of their budget. And it doesn't sound like we're to that step yet.
No, we're not.
So, okay, so I guess I'm having a hard time figuring out how we're going to figure out the answer to this problem right now. If we don't know what their revenues are, we don't know what they can spend. Nobody does. And so far, you're telling me that, no, we don't have a hold on what the revenue is. And that's fine. I understand you're working diligently on it. I'm not, I don't take this as...
Of course.
I'm just trying to work this through in my head as to where we're at in this process. And it seems like we're really, really, really still at the very beginning. So, like, I want to jump ahead because there were a couple interesting things said. So this, this fund started in 2002, and for all intensive purposes, it looks like it was running fine. It looked like it was okay. It looked like it had enough money to pay its bills and to continue to operate. And then we move along, we move along. 2018 is when we brought LifeQuest into this, and then nobody really looked at it too closely the following years after that. And then all of a sudden, in 2022, it's not running. Okay. So I'm trying to figure out what is the difference between 2002, 2018, besides the fact that we entered a contract with LifeQuest, was one of the changes. We entered into a contract with Marshville Clinic Health Systems to do their intercepts and their inter-facility transport, and we added three more firefighters' wages onto this fund. Those are the differences, correct? From 2002 to 2000?
I'm not sure what the headcount was in 2002. That, that piece I can't answer, but...
Okay, so that may be different, but...
Maybe.
But nonetheless, at some point, we added, in 2018, we added three more, for sure.
For sure.
So, so the changes would be that we started using LifeQuest, we added three more personnel in there, and we started a contract with Marshville Clinic Health System.
And we've been increasing our price for our service.
Right.
Without accounting for...
Right.
True collect.
Got that. Now, a couple other things with LifeQuest. Have we done any follow-up to not see, in particular, what, what they're doing with our city, but in general, how are they doing as a company? I mean, when they came and they presented to us, they were already in a lot of communities doing exactly the same thing that we hired them to do, and sounded like they were top-notch, you know, at the top of their game. Is that actually true? Or are there issues with them billing the wrong CPT codes, billing wrong codes, not rebilling? I mean, do we know that they're doing follow-up? Because I did have a citizen send me a message and just said, do you guys really need to look at LifeQuest and see if they're using the right codes, if they're getting rejections? Are they rebilling it? Are they gathering the right codes? But do we know if they're doing that? Or who's following that?
May I interrupt? First of all, there's a gentleman from LifeQuest here in the room. But I did not ask LifeQuest to be here for this particular meeting because I thought that would fit better under, when we start talking about the EMS thing, the EMS model...
I can withdraw that question then.
With the chief. Okay, thank you very much.
For the time being, but I would want that answer. And indeed, it probably...
We will, we will get that answer.
Come from a LifeQuest person at some point, that's fine. But I think that's really... But I think that's really important to know that because do we have money, do we have collectibles sitting out there that aren't being aggressively gone after because they've either had a rejection and are they being rebuilt? And certainly, somebody, I guess, from that company will answer that question. Thirdly, I do have a question. Why every year do you come, or the finance director comes and says, oh, we'd like to write off 30,000 this year? Where did that number come from? Where did we falsely get that very low number from?
So those are claims that LifeQuest has written off prior to the six-year window because the person has died or.
Okay.
Or whatever, you know, they know for 100% certain that that claim is uncollectible and that would be a bankruptcy or a death kind of scenario.
So somewhere they separate those out then?
Yes.
And they were only giving you that number?
Right, so.
On a regular reported basis?
Right.
Okay. And when did they report to us the actual uncollectible amount? Was that done yearly? Do we get quarterly reports? Do we get?
That would, that number would show up each month as we record the revenue that we receive and, you know, any adjustments that have to be made, as well as their payment. A part of that is accounts that they have deemed to be uncollectible.
Right.
So we'll see a little bit of uptick of that in 2022, while having confirmed with LifeQuest directly, but I suspect there's, when we went to LifeQuest in 2017, we also turned over.
Right.
Accounts that were existing. And I think we're starting to see, you know, a cleanup of that population of accounts. So we'll see a little bit of, I think we were already seeing probably 50,000 written off in 2022 already.
Okay.
May or, one second, I want you to continue that line of questioning, but the, I just want to remind that we will be trying to keep this to as close to seven o'clock as possible for the planning commission. So, but go ahead, Ms. Spiros.
I just have, I'll follow up with one. I mean, I have a lot more questions, but because of our time constraints, I'll just do one at this time. Isn't that going to be a rolling?
Yes.
Amount every year?
Yes.
Because it sounds like when you present it like this, well, just be prepared for next year because it's that six-year limit and we're just really going to get hit. But it's a rolling six-year thing.
Yes.
So it's not going to be just next year. It's going to be the following year, the debts that were in 2018 are going to be uncollectible. The following year after that is going to be the 2019. So we're always going to be reaching this statute of limitations for collecting the debts, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Because that seemed a little bit misleading, the way that it's been being presented all, every time that it's been being presented. It feels a little misleading, and so I wanted people who are listening in to understand that that's a rolling year, that's going to happen every single year. So it's not going to be a one-and-done and we're just going to get hit once really big and that's it. Prior to, hopefully, we make the adjustments and figure out what the actual revenues for the EMS fund will be. And I don't know what we can do or how we can fix this until we know that.
Thank you, Ms. Spiros. Mr. O'Reilly? Did you pass? Mr. Handler? Okay, Mr. Fire asked to be recognized.
Everybody should look at, from 2002 to 2018, the city did not take any money out of this fund. Now, from 18, 19, 20, 21, we're showing a deficit. And we say, well, you know, life's this and this, this is the fault and this. We are part of the fault. We took a big chunk of change. If it started out at 90,000, then went to 100,000, and not 150,000, whatever it is, every year we took more money. And if you've got 1.4 million dollars, it doesn't take long to get rid of it. So we take part of the blame, but we seem to not add that to the scenario. We're part of the problem and we have to look at that. Maybe that's the part, one of the parts we have to fill in. Otherwise, you know, we weren't losing any money from 20, from 2002 to 18.
Can I follow up to that, please?
Without objection. Go ahead.
Okay, so, but I'm not understanding that you're not convinced we weren't losing money. You're saying that it's unsure because you were unable to tell by the way the accounting was being done.
On the face of the financial statements, the fund has had a positive fund balance each year. You know, I can't tell about the allowance. I couldn't find evidence.
Well, right, but if, but if all those years we didn't have an allowance in there, we have to believe that we were spending money we did not have.
Logically.
Correct?
Logically, yes.
Logically, that would be the case even since 2002. If there was no allowance being made, which she cannot determine if there was, then all along, this could have been losing money. I will agree that, yes, in the list that I made, I did not add to the fact that we also did start to incorporate this administrative fee. That's another thing to add on to the list of what has changed between 2018 and now. Because I think we need to figure those, what's changed? Because if we were profitable, and that's a big if, if we were okay in 2002 through 2000 whatever, and we made these changes, then that's, yes, we need to start to look at the changes that we made as to, is this, you know, is this what caused the problem? And yes, that is an added, an added change that I did not list off when I was making my list. So that's all, but again.
Mr. Varg, do you have something to add?
Can I speak real briefly? You know, I know we've had a lot of conversation about the administrative charges and growing, and I imagine it seems to many of you sitting here, sitting here and watching this now or later on one of our platforms, that that's been patently unreasonable, what we've been charging. You have to realize that the fund balance looked good, it looked solid, and that the intent of the enterprise fund, as it is with wastewater, is to charge the cost as if it's a business. So the fact that they get HR services, IT services, finance services, other types of services from the city, to charge them that way seemed to make sense. It really did. Now, looking back and seeing that the fund balance really wasn't what it looked to be because many of these accounts were not fully recoverable, it looks kind of, in retrospect, like why were we doing that? I'm just trying to give you some context as to why we were doing it because we've been telling the taxpayers that this is totally supported by, separate from the general fund and supported outside of their taxes. Don't worry about it. It's totally not being paid for by property taxes. So the recovery costs that we were incurring here from that fund seemed to make sense. But like I said, and I'll say it one more time, in retrospect, seeing that that balance really wasn't what we thought it was, I get it. And that's how we have to find a way to move forward.
Thank you, Steve. Jennifer, you have anything, any final remarks? I see Jordan getting up. I think he has remarks.
Yeah, go ahead, sir. I just want to kind of counter back on the, we don't know what the revenues are. To that extent, no. We do know what the gross charges are for the services. We do know that there are roughly about 50-ish percent in discounts and adjustments that come through. We do have the accounts receivable balance that are.
I think that subject is probably best discussed in closed session because we are in negotiations.
Oh, I wasn't going to go with like, as far as cost per services, but I was going to say that you can take an accounts receivable balance and multiply it by your recovery rate for your bad debt collections, which I've been kind of looking at, which is around 24 to 22%. And kind of sizing that up to see what a normal annual bad debt expense would be. That's where I was looking at, between 150 to 200,000. So if you take that off the top of your revenues, that's about what we should have been recording for five years straight.
Okay.
So.
You were trying to go forward, like we wouldn't know what our future revenues would.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and trying to, because we don't know our customers.
And what those charges are actually going to be. That's an estimate. Our call volume is increasing.
Sure.
So that is truly unknown for future. In the past, we have that data.
Got you. I'm looking for, you know, not an exact specific number, but something, somewhere in a ballpark because I don't know how we decide if we can function if we don't know what the revenues will be. I mean, how do you know what you can pay for and what you can't pay for? So that's fine.
Okay.
Good with that.
All right, where we're going to go from here? What I'd like to do is have this as an agenda item for a future, not too distant future, council meeting. And we're, we can digest what we've heard and come up with suggestions or recommendations for the way we should proceed. I want to do this pretty quickly, so maybe even for next week's council meeting would be good. And the reason we want to do that is the budget is bearing down on us. And as you've heard tonight, if we were going to do something incremental with this, we'd probably want to start in this next year's budget. So with that, I'll ask one more time if there's anybody else that wants to speak. If not, I'll turn it back over to Mayor Testre. And thank you for your forbearance, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. At this point in time, we are going to adjourn, and we will again go to the next meeting. Thank you all for being here, and we need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, Whitzel, seconded by Tompkins. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All ayes. Thank you.